Okay. I'd like to call to order this rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's rescheduled from May 13th. This, today is May 20th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next up are approval of minutes from several previous meetings. The April 14th Committee of the Whole Minutes, April 22nd City Council Minutes, April 22nd Special Committee of the Whole Minutes, and April 29th Special City Council Minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, that motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Next item is presentations and public input. We have no scheduled presentations. Does anyone wish to address the city council rescheduled? If you do, please step forward and speak at the microphone.
I also review papers that use similar methods and things like this. So it's a huge part of my job to look at data like this, to look at reports like this, and understand what's happening with them. So I've been doing that. I've talked to you a little bit about it, and I've gotten in even deeper. So I'm, because this is the rescheduled meeting, so I'll speak again later. But because this is a rescheduled meeting, I'd like to tell you what I had learned by last week, this meeting time, which I also sent to you all. And I want to emphasize that in that email, I sent you my contact information. I'd be so happy to meet with you to talk about my understanding of the report, to help you dig into it yourselves, because it's a really dense report. Honestly, really honestly, I mean this unnecessarily dense, written in a way that is confusing, but that, you know, you can, we can understand. So I want to emphasize four things that I had noticed by last week. The report is very disorganized. The long format recommendations, which appear like in line throughout the paper, are the only place where you can find out what the recommendation is based on. So you have to go there instead of to the summary to find out like, oh, okay, they're recommending that we add this number of officers. Where do I find the information that supports that suggestion? And then, once you, so it's a little funny that that's not sort of in the, in the summary upfront. But also, when they have that, like where it says, like, this is the section number where you go to to find that, those section numbers are wrong for several of the recommendations. In fact, for the recommendation to add like a bunch of additional police officers, the section that it says that data is in, is a section that doesn't exist. Now, like, we can find it. It's a 300-page report, but like, we can dig through, we can figure out where that is in the report, like, what data they're using to support this, but like, we shouldn't have to, right? Like, a report that's that long, that you've spent so much money on, that you've given so many corrections to, should be correct in those ways. So, that's pretty annoying. Also, I want to emphasize to you, like, there are really simple little things they could do that are possible, that make a report like this much more functional. Every time it says "section whatever," that could be a link that jumps you to the page, to the tables. The table of content at the beginning could be linked so that you can easily find your way and jump through this document. Those are things that are sort of a bare minimum of what we can expect a report like this to, to, to be like. And, yeah, there's also, like, other organizational things, like, there, like, there's different size headers, but then the smaller text is a header that, like, then there's two subsections inside of it, and they're not all numbered, right? So there's a section called, like, Leadership and Communication, and then right under that, but in a bigger font, there's a section called Leadership, and then way below that, there's one called Communication. So these are two subsections within this section called Leadership and Communication, but like, the font sizes would suggest that they're not subsections. It's very weird, and it's just a silly way of making the report, or silly thing that makes the report so much harder to read, that really, for such an expensive report, shouldn't, shouldn't be there. So, in my efforts to sort of understand their report, those are the kinds of things I've been having to sort through. I also want to reemphasize the massive scope of their self-plagiarization, plagiarism, which is in, like, includes the things that they say are, that they, like, some of the conclusions that they've made. Michelle said that, that they, of course, they rewrite things because they view similar methods, but it's not just that. What I read before was things that they are stating about Urbana, that they've also stated about six other cities, or five other cities, I meant, five or six. And one of the, the big pieces that they self-plagiarize are these quotes by Sir Robert Peel, who, back like 1850, died, but before that, before he died, he was, like, his position on slavery was that maybe we should just hold on, like, we don't want to end that too fast because, like, what about the economy? That's absurd. This is not, and, and this is a person that they're quoting, that they're saying had really good ideas about policing. These are not people who we can trust in terms of the standards they choose and their positions on policing. I also call some attention in the email I sent you to some of the methods they use and the problems with that. For example, there's a Likert scale where the middle option of five was usually. So the scale is never, occasionally, usually, frequently, and always. And like, for me, frequently is less often than usually, like, you, anyway, this is so silly. I've shown this to a few of my colleagues, and we just laughed about it. It's such a silly, absurd thing, methodologically, to have messed up in such a big way. So anyway, I'll speak again in the next meeting, that's also today, but that's what I wanted to tell you last week. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Hey there, council. I'm going to talk a little about the history.
Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Ben Jocelyn. I'm an Urbana resident and have been for a lot of my life, including at my birth. On, I'm going to talk a little about the history of this report. On March 6th of last year, Michelle Wein Zettel of Berry Dunn came before you all in this space for what I believe was the first public time to discuss with you the Public Safety Review Project. At around the three-minute mark of the Urbana City Council Meeting Minutes, she introduces herself and a couple of her team members before starting with the statement, "The purpose of this project is to look at your public safety services being delivered throughout the community, particularly by the police and fire departments, and to consider ways in which we might reimagine some of those services. This is a far cry from what you have received. For those of you who wish to point out that this is only the first phase of their work, I point back to Michelle's words, where she followed her promise to reimagine public safety with, by stating the process they intended to follow." She said there would be three distinct phases. First, they would look at the current staffing. Second, they would look at alternatives and solicit community input. And after that, she said, "The last stage would be," and this is a quote, "to really kind of combine all of the information we get from the first two sections and coalesce that into a plan, into a series of recommendations and an architecture of sorts, for you look at and to consider or follow as you move forward." This was framed to the public and to you, not that they would first look at the police staffing and provide a report and recommendations, but instead, that they would look at all of the information and gather all of the information before discussing and providing recommendations to you. So it is not simply my idea and the idea of other citizens that a consultant who is brought in to reimagine public safety should gather all the data before issuing said recommendations. It was, in fact, their stated plan when they came before you over 14 months ago. To all of your credit, council members followed up with questions and more information. Councilmember Bishop said that she would like to give a little background and said that the City of Urbana had set aside money in the 2021 budget for an evaluation of the city's public safety through the lens of racial justice, and that that's how Berry Dunn got involved. She went on to say that she's excited about how Berry Dunn had talked about fundamentally shifting the relationship between police and the community by shifting the agencies from independent organizations to those that are jointly operated and, and a community-owned resource. James Quisenberry asked about question, or asked questions about the Citizen Police Review Board, and Michelle said it'd be one of the focal points of the process. Councilmember Wilkins asked about the non-police response and, and about soliciting strong community input. Michelle said that they would engage a wide range of folks and reiterated their commitment to this new emerging lane where communities ask, "Should we re-envision public safety?" and assured us that they had a robust model to check that here. Councilmember Colacetti said she was particularly excited about Berry Dunn because their robust community engagement process and their willingness to engage a broad range of alternatives. Wu, or Councilmember Wu stated her excitement with the recommendations, and Councilmember Hersi asked about public safety, or asked what public safety meant to Michelle, and Michelle responded by saying that police, fire, and EMS are only a narrow view of public safety. She then assured the council that they would look at public safety more broadly and stressed the importance of mental health. I commend all of you for how you started this project, and I ask that you remain committed to that vision. Just a little more history shows that the reason that the budget was set aside in 2021 was because the violent arrest of Ali Lewis in 2020 and the murder of George Floyd and the sort of uprising and upswell of community needs for a different view of public safety. And the fact that you all commissioned for a quarter million dollars a report to re-envision public safety, and that you're now considering a $1.5 million budget increase for the police as a direct result of the public outcry because of the violent arrest of Ali Lewis and the murder of George Floyd is a miscarriage of justice and a miscarriage of the faith and trust put in you by the citizens of Urbana. I...
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
We have some emails to read.
One from last week, and then we have two for this week. Yeah, we have someone.
Hi, my name's Sana. I live in Urbana. I'm a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee. I'm here to provide my public input in regards to budget and policing. You probably remember, maybe you remember me speaking in the favor of the ceasefire resolution here many times. I spoke a lot about my position as a Muslim in this community and also from a human or moral perspective as a community member. But today, I'm here to talk about the Berry Dunn report from the perspective of a researcher. I've mentioned before that I'm a researcher and educator at the University of Illinois. My work focuses on the intergenerational impacts of genocide on the body, and I talked, I've talked about genocide and colonialism here before. But the methods I use are mixed. I look at oral histories from community members, blood sample, quantitative blood sample data, and survey data as well. So mixed methods, just like in this report. The methods the Berry Dunn report uses to make its conclusions are intentionally more complicated than they need to be and are very inconsistent, echoing Dr. Camille Cobb's statements earlier. So if this report was going through the scientific peer review process, both reviewers would have rejected it, and it would have never been published. Last meeting, I heard what Michelle from Berry Dunn had to say about the report. They mentioned that the length of the report was for accessibility, but at the same time said perhaps we didn't understand the methods, and that's why we have so much criticism of it. This is the example of the kind of inconsistency that we see throughout the report. As an aside, I think we all intuitively know that length doesn't mean accessibility. Documents are accessible when they are clear and concise. That's technical writing 101. The idea that Professor Cobb, who did the community a favor by lending her time and expertise to do a deep dive into this report for our, all of our benefit, didn't understand it, is like, frankly ludicrous. The report is so, is supposedly so long to make it accessible to anyone who's reading at a fifth-grade level and above. So anyone who takes the time to go through it should be able to understand it, and that's the case with any good report. As you know, that's not the case. I'm sure you've looked at the Berry Dunn report and, like, saw that it's quite confusing. You don't need to have done survey research and read survey reports to know that. The community has come up and discussed the issues with the report and cited information from the report itself as to why hiring more police is not the best step for solving problems in this community. I think the biggest issue is that we've not explored any alternatives. This report was not a community-based endeavor. The qualitative data solicited from community members regarding alternatives to policing was very limited. No information about the demographics or number of community members solicited to be part of the study were made public, so that's really hard to evaluate in terms of methods, especially since I was not there for any of those community discussions. I've lived in the same apartment nearby to City Hall in Urbana for about four years, and I've been coming to city council meetings since October, and I had no idea that Berry Dunn was looking for community input. So if it's not community members like me, who are supposed to be giving public input, who is going to these meetings? Even so, I don't know, even though I don't know who they talked to, it seems like most people they did talk to were interested in alternative models, but the models provided in the report were not community-specific. And it does say that the members of Berry Dunn are working with police to come up with alternative policing models. And, you know, as part of the Berry Dunn report, they claim that staff was reduced due to community calls to defund the police, but that, knowing the context, that wasn't the situation. So many of us have lost faith in the Berry Dunn report, so I'd like to propose that the city council allocate some more time to taking community input into what alternative to, alternatives to policing could look like for us here. I don't know what that might look like, maybe a series of town halls. But right now, alternative options haven't been presented at all. I know budget discussions have a timeline, but hiring police is not time-sensitive in this community. Crime in Urbana is at a historic low. The report has already taken more time than initially planned. There's no need to rush into a decision that would cost the city millions without at least concern, considering alternative options that come from the community, which I think was the initial goal of the report anyway. We've already spent this much time and money and effort into thinking about this. I think that, like, taking more time to really understand what the community wants and who the community is would be worth it. So I think there are a few paths this council could take, and so I would hope that you at least consider multiple options before jumping into something quite costly. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? We have one email that came in last week related to this meeting from Dua Aldasuki, and then we have two emails today. You have another one?
I have one.
Okay. For today or last week?
For today.
Okay. I'm going to read the one intended for the meeting last week, and then at our next meeting, today's meeting, we'll read the ones for today. Got that?
One for today, next week.
No, the one for today, next meeting. We're on last week's meeting. Yes. This is the rescheduled council meeting, just so we keep the record straight. Okay. So this is an email from Dua Aldasuki. It came in for the, last Thursday. "Please read my comment aloud at the next council meeting. My name is Dua Aldasuki, a CU local. For reference, I'm a Palestinian woman who's also a Muslim and wears a hijab. I would like to share my experience with UPD since just the beginning of this year. Number one, here in these chambers, on a Monday evening in March, a police officer came up to me and asked me to leave, when after two hours of public input and a line of another 15 people ready to share their support for a ceasefire resolution were turned away, the chamber was filled with ceasefire chants. An officer asked me to leave, which is not inherently problematic. They could have been following orders, and that's a conversation for another time. What ensued is very troubling, though. When the officer was challenged on asking us to leave by asking who issued that command, he lied to our faces to save face and said, 'I didn't ask you to leave.'" Two, on that same night as we took it outside City Hall, we had a car run through our crowd. Thankfully, no one was injured. The car then had the audacity to circle back shortly after, when the police officer there was informed of the situation. They had a chat with the driver, let them on their merry way, own way, despite dozens of us there who had just witnessed the attempted violence. Just a few weeks ago, UPD responded to a call by UIUC where five police forces showed up with tear gas canisters, batons, and riot gear against a group of students who felt they had no choice but to protest and some tents on their campus to demand an end to the ongoing genocidal attacks on Palestinians. The councilwoman who spoke of nothing but positive experiences may have been blessed to experience one side of UPD, but that is not my experience as a Palestinian woman calling for an end to the US-backed Israeli genocide against my family and community. I do not believe the officers in the UPD are acting maliciously, but my experience is similar to the experience of Black and Brown Americans here and across the nation. The police force is part of a system intended to protect some, a system with inherent bias against others, and a system where violent repression of the community is considered justified. It is a systemic issue that cannot be solved by granting more power to the police force and increasing their presence. We urge you to listen to your constituents, explore alternative response models, consider other options, and consider every constituent, not just some." Thank you. Okay. And the rest of the emails, I think we had two more that came in today, which will be read at the next meeting. Okay, council input and communication. Grace.
I just wanted to thank the public for the input that people have given by email and showing up here again tonight. I agree with some of the concerns about the Berry Dunn report, and that it's inappropriate and not in line with the original goal of the study, to jump into hiring more officers before even exploring alternative systems or programs. So just want to keep the idea alive, take my three minutes of my platform, and say that I agree with that, support looking into alternatives. Do not support any additional hires before we've at least completed the rest of the study, gotten meaningful public input, and actually explored alternative systems, as was the goal when we set out. Thank you.
Any other council member communications? Joaquin.
Yeah, I, I guess ditto would be the easy way to say what, what I want to say is I appreciate Grace raising, you know, with securing the funding for this study, the goal was to look at alternate responses. I'm still waiting on that information. We will see what comes of that, but I do think it's important that, you know, that is where this started. This process is not over. I recognize that there are grand ideas of where we could go in a lot of different ways, but I do want a complete picture before we look at long-lasting changes that are going to have significant impact on the city budget, going to have significant impact on staffing. So there is still a lot of information that I am expecting to see from this process, and I think we still have a long way to go to make sure that community members are involved.
I would just remind folks that the ward, three finalists of the proposed ward maps are, currently can be found on the city website. There's a link on the homepage. They'll stay up through this Friday for comments from the public. Yes?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. How are people supposed to give feedback?
On the, the page that they're taken to, there's a special email.
Okay.
Set up for that.
Thank you.
And there will be a Ward 7 Suna meeting on May 30th, and it takes place at St. Matthew's Church, and that will be at 7:00 PM. Ward 7, Ward 7 meeting. Okay. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is ordinance number 2024-04-019, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this is Budget Amendment Number 8 omnibus. There a motion?
I'll put it on the table. Move Budget Ordinance, sorry, Ordinance Number 2024-04-019, Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance for Budget Amendment Number 8 for approval.
Second?
A second.
Discussion. Just as a reminder, in general, this budget art, it's been a while since we've actually looked at this. It covers funding for increasing the tower ladder, funding for covering tower ladder truck repairs. There's a fire station construction placeholder. It includes funds to potentially repay property taxes related to the Carl Hospital Foundation lawsuit. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, we'd like to, we have nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move right to the regular agenda, and I motion for a vote on Resolution Number 2024-05-021R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2029.
There a second?
Second.
Was that a hand over here? I'm going to give it to Shandra. Any discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
I'm just here to answer any questions you have. We, we made some minor adjustments we shared with you guys. Nothing of major context, some corrections, but just here for any questions if you have.
Can you tell us what the corrections are?
Yeah, there was a point that we had just referenced, that the last local motor fuel tax increase was made in 2011, not 2015. We updated that. We made a correction on the dates pertaining to the TIF 4. We just had a typo in there from December 2026 to December 2025. I think that was the extent of the corrections that happened between last time we talked.
Questions for Tim? Grace.
Sorry, maybe did have one, about, I think, like, the, the fire station constructions being one of the big capital purchases here. And it looks like our final price here in the CIP is like 15.5 some million, right? And I thought when, just a few weeks ago, when we were doing this budget ordinance, that we were set to be on our target below 14.4. So if you could help, is that, like, interest in that difference, or what is the difference in some of those numbers?
No, the, the construction is still under the 14.4, right around like the 13.8 number that, that's encumbered, that'll be encumbered in this year. Total construction for fire stations, the design's another 1.2 that's already encumbered with that as well. There was the property acquisition, Philo Road, the property acquisition of Bradley. They all roll up into that bigger number, but the, the answer is that the, what's presented in the CIP is reflective of that 14.4 million for construction, which is about 600,000 over what our final guaranteed maximum price is going to be.
Thank you. Chris.
So, Tim, your, your sixth email to me was that when you add construction costs, design fees, property acquisition, and the interest, it comes to 19.1 million. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. And I, I have a point, a technical question or a logistical question. These, the other resolutions here could be all done in omnibus fashion, so take it away.
So my first motion was going to be to bundle them into one omnibus, so I'll read them all. Okay. So I would like to motion that we bundle the following resolutions into one omnibus vote. Resolution Number 2024-05-00-022R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Florida Avenue Shared Use Path. Resolution Number 2024-05-023R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Baker's Lane Shared Use Path. Resolution Number 2024-05-024R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Colorado Avenue Resurfacing. Resolution Number 2024-05-025R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Boneyard Creek Crossing Bridge Repairs. And fin, Resolution Number 2024-05-026R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Springfield Avenue, Wright Street to Gregory Street Resurfacing. And finally, Resolution Number 2024-05-027R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Vine Street and Illinois Street Improvements. I motion that we bundle all these resolutions.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Sharice. Will, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. You may now make an omnibus motion.
I will. I will. I would like to make an omnibus motion for approval of 022R, 023R, Resolution 024R, 25R, 026R, and 027R. All those for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, or moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees, there are none. Reports of officers, none tonight. There is no new business, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.